Call the Boarding of Orders, do we have roll call, please?
Chair Blair Sicklin. Vice Chair Jean Enright.
Present.
Secretary Treasurer Wayne Richards.
Present.
Commissioner Catherine Waldron.
Present.
Commissioner Joseph Anderson.
Present.
Executive Director Manuel Almira.
I'm here.
Court Counsel John Pemera.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, may we rise for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Additions, deletions, reorganization of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman. The Chair, we would like to call J. 2. J. 2 is the Mullins parcel. Bring that back to you as some future point. Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Let's move I. 3 to consent. It's a minor change order in our favor. Move I. 3 to consent, please.
All right, I. 3. Do we need a motion?
I have no problem.
Move to ratify the modified or amended agenda, please.
Motion by Commissioner Richards. Second, Commissioner Enright, in discussion, all in favor of opposed carries five zero. Okay. That's it with the deletions, reorganization. Full of the agenda.
Some of.
Is that what you just did?
What did you just did there?
Okay.
No, didn't you? Oh, he did it on me.
He did it before I even asked. He was way ahead of me.
Sweet.
So, that's fine. Prove the minutes. From last meeting. You'll have a chance to.
Seven. I'll leave you seven.
All right, we have a motion, Commissioner Enright, we have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Richards, in discussion, all in favor of opposed carries five zero. Presentations and announcements. Go all over and wait.
Six years later.
Seems like four.
Well, Commissioners, we have an award presentation ceremony. I'll pass it over to the Chair.
All right, but before we give Catherine the new automobile that we.
We're also gonna give her the ship. That's right, we're giving her the ship.
You have your choice.
Giving her the ship.
She have a ship.
The ship.
She have a ship.
We have two of people that like to say a few words. Karen Marcus, you could come on up first, and then Bobby Lindsay. You can both come up together if you'd like.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Councilmembers. I'm here, Karen Marcus, 920 Evergreen Drive in North Palm. I'm here on behalf of myself, Sustainable Palm Beach County, former county commissioner, just to wish Catherine well in her next endeavor and thank her. Thank you very much for all the hard work you've done here for everybody in the county, for the port. It's been a hard-working, good chemistry dialogue, and we appreciate it. I appreciate it very much. I know how hard that is to do, and you've done it really well, and it's very much appreciated. Good luck in your next endeavor. You're jumping from the frying pan to the fire, so to speak. So, we'll probably be seeing you in Tallahassee, so good luck with that. But I just wanted to say thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that very much.
Bobby Lindsay.
Well, Catherine, mine just got a little shorter. Hi, Bobby Lindsay, 212 Caribbean Road, Palm Beach. I'm also here speaking as a resident of Palm Beach today, and I would also like just to show some thanks and gratitude for the service that Catherine has given to the community. And as, one of the things I want to recognize is Catherine for her understanding that all the communities in the Lake Worth Lagoon are connected to the Port of Palm Beach. And the port's location at the entrance of the Palm Beach Inlet, Lake Worth Lagoon, and its maritime commerce and jobs are very important to our area. But Catherine deserves special recognition for her understanding of both the growing billion-dollar ecotourism economy such as diving, snorkeling, and picnicking at Phil Foster Peanut Island Parks and the Blue Heron Bridge, the fishing guides and charter businesses, scuba diving boats taking locals and international visitors out in hopes of swimming with or sighting goliath groupers, sea turtles, or manatees, recreational boating, and all the associated heads in our hotel beds. Catherine always understood the importance of these activities along with the nearby residential communities, and that all of us deserve to thrive safely and harmoniously with the important business of our shallow draft port. As a boater and a diver and a long-term resident, I just want to thank you for all your efforts and on our behalf, on our collective behalf, and wish you the very best in your next endeavor, which I hope we'll find out about next week. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bobby.
All right, well, we have a little plaque that we'll need to, let me read it, and then we'll come down and get a picture of Catherine. In recognition of Port of Palm Beach District Commissioner Catherine Waldron for your service, leadership, and commitment to the Port of Palm Beach, 2017 to 2022. And I just would like to say one other thing that hasn't been mentioned, though. Anytime there was a disaster, natural disaster, hurricane, or we were gonna ship something, Catherine always took the lead.
That's right.
And it was her more than anyone I've ever seen, and for that alone, I really expressed my gratitude. But why don't we get a picture of this?
Can I just say a couple of things?
Yes, sure.
Is that okay? I've really enjoyed my six years here, and I think that this commission and this port is very underappreciated, and we are an economic driver, and we have a lot to be proud of. And I've met a lot of great people. The staff is phenomenal. They were always there every single time I needed something and had a stupid question. And Commissioner Anderson, it's been nice working with you down here on the floor. We didn't quite make it up there, but maybe someday. And I wish you well in your next endeavors. Commissioner Richards, thank you very much for your guidance. You were always there to kind of help explain things to me, and, you know, sometimes you may explain, but it was okay. But I appreciate that. And Commissioner Sicklin, when my grandkids come down in 50 years, they're looking forward to meeting you up here. But you've been great, and you certainly have a lot of institutional knowledge. And Commissioner Enright, we didn't always agree, but I was always right.
And I made sure they made you cheer.
Yes, thank you.
Nothing else.
And I've enjoyed working with all of you. I think we made a good team, so hopefully it'll carry on. And you, I know your retirement's coming up, so hopefully I'll still see you guys in Tallahassee, assuming I get there. And I do hope to do some infrastructure work, so hopefully I can support you guys there. And thank you, Karen and Bobby, for everything. And of course, Richard Pinsky, I'll see you in Tallahassee, I'm sure. I'll probably see you more now, so. And I see Anita. Thank you, Anita, for plugging away and persevering on the cruise line. That was pretty tough there for a couple of years. So, thank you, everybody.
Okay, Manny, what are we gonna, F. 2?
Yes, under F. 2, we have a presentation, Commissioners, on increase in our land capacity. Michael Williams has made a presentation that you'll be able to see, and I hope that this will point us in the right direction. That's what we're asking the Board to provide us with comments. So, with that, Michael Williams, please.
Thank you, Mr. Almira. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Again, for the record, Michael Williams, Director of Finance. And as Mr. Almira stated, this presentation is about how to increase land capacity in the port for our existing tenants. And this is really about the short- to medium-term horizon we're looking at. Next slide, please. I'll provide a little bit of context, a background, some options that the Board may want to consider, where we stand as a port on funding to finance any potential acquisitions, and finally, how to proceed, which I envision a conversation with the Board and hopefully provide some guidance to staff on how we should go forward on a decision. I think, as you're aware, the port is growing, growing internally with our existing tenants. This is not new tenants. As the Finance Director here at the port for the first year, the port has experienced revenue growth similar to what it had in 2018. If it wasn't for teeters, we will be right there at a record level of revenue. So, that's thanks to the strong growth from tropical shipping, primarily container handling. We're seeing a 7% increase in containers and overall cargoes outside of sugar and molasses as double digits increase. And so, that really speaks to a need for land space. Also, several of our existing tenants are constantly harping at we need more space. Their business model requires this for them to continue to grow, and so, as a port, we have to look at how we plan for this in a sustainable manner going forward. The Port Master Plan that we're in the midst of developing, and one of the primary goal of the Master Plan is to optimize efficiency within the port, existing footprint. This is not just go grab land. It's really about how can we look at technology, how should we lay out the pieces within the port, given the legacy contracts and long-term contracts? How do we navigate around those to make sure the port is optimized? A big part of that optimization is a PID project, which is gonna look at the medium-to-long-term efficiency of how containers come in and out of the port. And also, I think the Board members are aware that the port owns eight parcels of property on the 10th, 11th Street, which is the northern boundaries of the port. Six of those parcels were recently acquired. Two were acquired back when the Sky Pass Bridge was being developed. Since we purchased those six parcels, it was about six months ago, we have received several calls from respective property owners there trying to sell to the port. And so, again, this is why we're here today, to get some kind of guidance on how to proceed. As the Finance Director here, I can tell you without a doubt, the board revenues is always a good thing, and so additional revenues is something that the port needs to look at in order for us to maintain our critical infrastructure. Next one. Just to orient you to the parcels that we're talking about here north of the port, northern boundaries, is 10th, 11th Street from east of Broadway to the railroad tracks. It's about 59 parcels, give and take, approximately 16-plus acres, and that's without any type of abandonment of public right-of-way. Port, as I mentioned, own eight parcels. Current zoning is downtown industrial, which allows for warehouses, storages, and on the main street, which would be Broadway, office or retail-type buildings. You can go up to three stories high or 35 feet high from a vertical standpoint. And staff estimate the total acquisition for all remaining parcels, if the Board indeed elect to go with this option, would be in 22 to 25 million dollars for total acquisition. Option one is do nothing, really. The port, as I mentioned, own eight parcels, that's what highlighted in the yellow. That's about two-and-a-half acres. If we were to do nothing, we could look to work with the City of Rivera to abandon the public right-of-way from Avenue E to Broadway. That would probably add a couple more square footage and extend the port boundaries. The box in red, that's an easement that the city has, public right-of-way, so we would not look to abandon that portion unless we acquire the entire block. If we were able to stop right here, what's available to us is about 122 square feet of developable space. Doesn't get you a whole lot, but we could potentially do a small warehouse on there or lay-down area for our port, specifically tropical. Next slide, please. This next option, too, is to look at acquiring the remaining six parcels within the eastern block. That would get us about four acres or developable space of about 200,000 square feet. If we were able to proceed this way, we would look to petition the city to abandon the easement in the middle of the block, and also to abandon the public right-of-way. Again, that gets you possibly a warehouse and some lay-down area if you were to look at this option. Next slide, please.
How many, go back. How many different owners own those parcels?
We currently have four owners for the remaining six parcels. And several of those owners have reached out to the Board.
Everything's for sale, right?
Yes, everything's for sale. This third option is a little bit more ambitious. It's looking at from Broadway east, west to the railroad tracks. We'll get further into the financing of these parcels in the next slides. And but what's proposed here in order for us to afford this ambitious take would be a phased approach, where we could look to acquire over the next five years. And again, this is gonna be a price tag of anywhere from 22 to 25 million, and who knows where that would go north. So, that would allow the port to take about 16 acres, potential developable space of about 800,000 square feet, which could be a whole lot of use for the port. Next slide, please. I looked at our finance here at the port, and if you look in your agenda package, the port currently has 38 and a half million dollars roughly in the bank, but a good chunk of those funds are restricted between our bond covenant and what the Board already approved in matching dollars to match FDOT funding for other projects, the PID being one of those projects. So, in essence, 25 million dollars is off the board. The port, in essence, only have about 13 million free cash flow. If you take off 5 million dollars for working capital, which is really six months of your operating budget, you really only have 8 million dollars to work on capital projects. We were successful, staff was successful this year to solicit the FDOT and receive 2.3 million, which will be coming to the Board in PTGA grant. Of that amount, 40,000 is available in the next couple of months, we'll bring that forward, and the additional 2.265 million sometime in July of next year. So, in total, for the current year, the port has approximately 10.5 million dollars available for potential acquisition if we do choose to go this route. Next slide, please. Additional funding, when you look at the current run rate, basically cash flow from operations, it's about 3, 3.5 million per year. In 2026, we'll retire our bond, and so that gives us a little bit more cash. So, over the next five years, the port should accumulate anywhere from 22 to 25 million dollars. We feel very confident, given our success in relation with FDOT District 4, that we should secure anywhere from 3 to 5 million annually in Fsted funding. That's, that would get us another 15 to 25 million over the next five years. The port could also look at a potential PPP-type opportunity to acquire and build out. And lastly, as I mentioned, in 2026, we'll be retiring our existing debt. We could look to proceed, again, with a new issue for potential build-out if the Board so desire. Next slide, please. So, what's in front of us and what staff is trying to get guidance on is how to proceed. Do we stop where we at, or do we continue to acquire in the existing parcel that we're in, which is east of, west of Broadway and the first block right there, the eastern block? Or do we acquire everything on 10th, 11th Street? And that's really the guidance that we're seeking, and hopefully make a decision so we know how to proceed.
Okay, hold up. Here's, the first question is, I, in the Master Plan that we're doing, that was my number-one concern, was to find out, say, if we bought a property for 3 or 4 million dollars, and we decided maybe we could turn it into warehousing, what kind of revenue, after spending X amount of dollars, would the port be able to take in? I mean, that's the key to me for any purchases before I'm pretty much willing to buy anything, unless it was almost a giveaway, is that we're selling this, best offer, but, you know, the prices are sky-high right now. So, someone, and I assume that the Master Plan's gonna do this, is gonna explain to us that if you purchase this parcel land, if you lease it for this amount, is that gonna be in the Master Plan? That's what I was hoping for, so.
Yes, it will be, and unfortunately, the Master Plan has not advanced to that stages as yet. The data will get us there. I think, as I mentioned in the onset, the existing tenants are growing. They're in need of more facilities. And just from point of reference, our South Gate warehouse would be a starting point, and if it's a lay-down area we're looking at, then it's what we're currently leasing space at. So.
Okay. Wayne?
Similar thoughts, and I think I've had two formal meetings with staff that did a great job going over this room. I think it's clear that we're landlocked, we're bursting into seams, we have to grow. The Sea River Beach has been very clear that that's a great block for transitional use. We recall that Jimmy and I attended Charettes years ago, where they said that's a good area for transitional use. The northern front of the buildings would look like an office in a rear of the port, we'd warehouse. But I ask the same question you asked, what's the return of the investment? We have to know that. But at the same time, we have to grow. So, still looking for the ROI. And if you want to use South Gate as an example, maybe you knew that, the warehouse is at South Gate. But as business people, we need to know, is it a 20-year, 30-year, 40-year? We are a government entity, we have to support our businesses. So, we'd be willing to accept a longer return, you know, longer timeframe, but we still need the data.
Chief?
I guess I have a question. You mentioned that there are eight owners. Are any owners companies, or they're individual houses with people? I mean, you said there are eight owners. I mean, tell us about the owners. Are they individual homeowners, or?
There, in the current block that we're in, there are six remaining parcels, and I believe it's four owners. Three are companies, LLCs. They're still individuals. I believe one of the parcels is Airbnb, and others are rented out to individuals.
I ask that because I know that interest rates have gone up, and they will probably continue, but at the end of the day, because they've asked you, they might be willing to sell them maybe at a lower price if they're individuals, because the average Joe Bollisnoy would not probably be able to come up with the money with the interest rates. So, if we can get a decent deal, now might be better than never or up the road, because things will continue to go up, and they might be willing to sell. You know, I think it's the staff who works something out and come back to us. Because you never know, it might be a person with a house, and they might say, I'm out of here, I'm going to Georgia. How do you know? Just an idea.
Any other questions?
Other questions?
So, you had four different plans, but they were over several years. So, if we were to, say, move forward with this, it seems a little awkward that we would be putting it out there publicly that we want to expand, and then we'd be buying this property in a few years. It just, wouldn't we just buy it all at once? It doesn't, I guess I don't understand the theory, because if you put it out there, that in three years you want to buy X parcel, what's to prevent, you know, somebody from jacking that price up?
That's a good point, but as a public body, it will be out there. Once you approve the Master Plan, and the Master Plan dictates that you need this land, it's out there. So, the issue for us is, do we have all the funds today, or do we want to pursue other funding opportunities, such as appropriation requests from Tallahassee as an example, to go and try to grab everything? That's an option. Or we can issue revenue bonds as an option, but it's out there. And as I stated, there's been property owners calling constantly since we acquired those six parcels six months ago, so.
Go ahead, Joe.
Has there been any unsolicited bids to the port or any direct talks for public-private partnerships?
Commissioner, there has been one interested party that has made an offer to join our efforts, and under a private-private partnership.
PPP?
Yeah. So, there's been one, but it's been unofficial, just a verbal. It's a former tenant of the port who's interested in developing warehouses and that type of structure. Nothing official, and I don't have anything in writing, it's just verbal.
Yeah, okay.
So, and that is, that's a quandary, because we're public, we have to have this discussion as a public. The news is that there aren't legal avenues that we could undertake and have in the past that would prevent us from overpaying. So, that's important, it's out there. We, of course, it's out there, so we will never overpay. I think at a minimum, would you go back one or two slides to show us the four different blocks, please? At a minimum, 1A has to be included. We own 60% of that block, at a minimum, 1A. And I think synergies would dictate looking at Phase 2A as well. So, maybe Phase 1A and 2A are where we start, and then 2B and 1B could be, have to be down the road. But one, finishing 1As, we're there, we're pregnant, gotta go through. Sorry. And 2A would seem to make sense as well. You pick up 2A, you get the block abandoned in between, and now you can actually build something that you would then incorporate into our current values.
That makes more sense, actually, than going 1A to 1D.
Or 1B, you wouldn't skip over 2A.
So, those are my thoughts, 1A at a minimum, perfectly 1A and 2A at the same time.
Well, we've got a lot to look at, and like I said, we've got the Master Plan, Manny's a party. We have one of the real estate companies that have worked with us before, not charging us anything.
Correct.
And they're basically doing a lot of legwork, seeing what the property's really worth, and looking at appraisals. So, I think we're in the right step, anyway. So, I think this answered a lot of questions that we all had in the last couple of months, and I think it clears a lot up for me, and I hope everybody else is satisfied. Any questions? Then I'll just call Michael. Last question?
But he did say that, if you look at 2A, didn't you say that there are many people who call you about 2A also? Okay. There are people who are interested in selling in 2A?
Yes.
Okay.
Not everyone, and the reason why.
What about the remainder of 1A?
Say that again?
What about the remainder of 1A? Do you have the individuals who are interested in selling the remainder?
Yes, yes, Commissioner.
Everything's for sale.
And just, the reason why we looked at 1B, a couple of those owners, first of all, those are larger parcels, they're more commercial, and the vision there would be to put them to quick use, to just lay down for tropical, for example. That's the reason why we were looking at 1B as a next. Um, that, that's the reason why we were looking at, at, at 1B as a next logical phase. The 2A is, uh, individual owners and, and that's a little bit more time consuming, if you will. So that, that's the reason for that, um, decision.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very good, good presentation. All righty. Consent agenda. If anybody has anything to pull, if not, we'll accept a motion. Motion, Commissioner Richard, second question. Send right, any discussion? All in favor, opposed, carries five of the, okay? District reports.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to start with a very popular topic and that's master plan, particularly in master plan update. We have been actively working on the master plan for the last six months and I thought it would be appropriate to give you an update on where we are. So with that in mind, I have invited Kerry Simpson, Vice President of Portion of Moffett and Nichols, to provide the board with a status report. Kerry?
Thanks, Mr. Almira. Well, the status, the last May, we kicked off the public engagement period one, during which we received initial input from multiple stakeholders, including cities, towns, the public, planning and transportation agencies, utility and service providers, your tenants, port management and the board as well. So we combined all this input with our team's research and studies and reflected this data in the draft master plan, which also includes graphical representations to allow stakeholders to visualize the combined data. The primary purpose of the draft master plan was to use it as a springboard to obtain additional input during, and data points during the public engagement period two. The draft master plan's not intended to provide recommendations at this point in the process, but its purpose is pretty much to generate additional input that will be used to formulate future recommendations. I think there's been some misinterpretation of the technical terms and the graphics in the master plan, but it has resulted in good input of what is not wanted in the master plan, specifically with respect to the perception of what constitutes dredging. Uh, the draft master plan indicates channel maintenance that does not increase existing channel depth or the width. And as a planner, I feel increasing the depth and the width of the channel is not warranted for three primary reasons. One, the port is currently land constrained, so when compared to the berth capacity, the lion's share of the master plan effort has been focused on improving the landside capabilities to accommodate the throughput that comes across the berths. And also the existing wharf structures are not capable of accommodating deeper depths without significant capital investment, which is probably warranted to be spent on the land side of the port. And the destinations for ships that sail from the port really cannot accommodate larger ships. So the draft master plan currently does not have this recommendation, or really have any recommendation this time. So the next step for the master plan process is to continue obtaining additional input through public engagement period two and use it to develop the initial recommendations for vetting by port management and the board, and then we'll revise those prior to incorporation of the final recommendations into the final master plan. And that's where we're at today.
Question? Catherine?
Um, I think, you know, you're, to a certain extent, preaching to the choir about dredging only being maintenance dredging. I think it kind of got away from, from you or somebody because, you know, there was a lot of upheaval or anxious people, especially over in Palm Beach, about dredging. And I'm not really sure how that, that happened because I thought upfront, we were pretty clear about it just being, nobody should, you know, we're not deep dredging. And, uh, so it was unfortunate because it, you know, caused us to have to spend a lot of time cleaning that up.
And I think that when the draft master plan came out with all these data points and input from everyone, people anticipated that those were recommendations. And they're not the recommendations this time because the recommendations really have to be vetted by the port and the board before they're presented. So really just at the start, we started with a blank slate and a lot of the agencies and stakeholders were saying, well, it's hard to comment because we can't see anything. And so now we got all this data and input and put together these graphics so they can visualize what it means and really just looking for additional input at this time to turn into recommendations. And that's kind of the process that the master plan goes through, the process it is going through right now.
We should just be more cognizant going forward when talking to the public that we're pretty specific and clear so they don't get anxious again.
Yeah, absolutely. And that was kind of the, the point that really brought up the dredging aspect of it and what our thoughts and the port's thoughts are.
Good, Joe.
I don't know if staff or you can speak to this, just wanted you to expound about the hiatus of the master plan being temporarily shelved as well as where are we with the timeline and the expectations from the contractual standpoint and also include in ratifying and codifying that with this board as well as the other governmental agencies that we have to go to. But I really wanted to understand where are we? Are we on the, on the right timeline or are you meeting your expectations and benchmarks? And I don't know if that's something that we need to have our director speak to or if you can speak to that as well.
Okay.
Commissioner, you almost beat me to the punch and you did, but that's okay. Let me just read a, a recommendation from me. My strongest recommendation right now is to pause the external development and that is let's just not go back out and outreach, community outreach, because quite honestly, as Commissioner Walden mentioned, uh, things are getting a little bit ahead of themselves and this is subject to misinterpretation. So what I'm suggesting is that we continue internally to work on the master plan, but let's put a pause on going out and reaching out to individual cities and municipalities and bring them what is basically a, a, a non-finished product. We'll be back. We'll go back out in the field, we'll tell everybody, inform those who would like to hear what is our final presentation, that is our master plan, once the board approves it. Now, you raise a legitimate, very legitimate point. We went ahead and contacted the, the county and this is what we heard. Taking additional time with the master plan on hold will not, and I repeat, will not affect the timing of the adoption of the port's master plan into Palm Beach County Comprehensive Plan Amendment and eventually by the state of Florida. Port staff spoke with Maria Vello, Principal Planner of Palm Beach County Planning Division, about our master plan submission schedule. Palm Beach County has two intake dates, two, for the comprehensive plan. The earliest date that the port could begin to process at the pre-application meeting prior to April 7th, 2023. Using that intake date would give us the port an anticipated effective date of adoption of March of 2024. The closeout for that previous pre-application meeting was September 30th, 2022. We passed it. So therefore, the only deadline that we face is the expiration of the FDOT PTGA for the master plan and that will not go into effect until December 31st, 2025. So I'm here to say that it is not detrimental in any way for us to pause, but we're not pausing, we're not stopping the master plan. The master plan continues. It's just internal that we're going to have to work on. And once we, I feel and staff feels and Moffett and Nichols feel that it's now a master plan that includes recommendations, that's when we'll bring it back. And then we will proceed in explaining it to the communities. I know it's a long-winded response, but I hope I at least touched on a couple of points.
Far as the contractual?
Well, in contractual as well, if I had asked, and you basically mentioned.
Uh, the executive director, if I may, Mr. Chair, asked me to look at the, the contract to see if there was any ramifications to a pause on this component of the, of the effort. And the answer is no. Uh, the way the contract is written, there's a, a great deal of flexibility and frankly, the port has unlimited discretion in deciding if to go forward, when to go forward and how to go forward.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good. Any other questions? Okay. Very good. Thank you for that. Kind of answers a lot of questions that we all have been getting, so that's.
So again, we're not, we're not stopping, we're proceeding. It's just that we're not going to go out and explain things that are basically unfinished.
Right. And if any commissioner has anything they're, you know, if they want to see in the master plan, you know, call staff and say, you know, when you're discussing this.
Please.
You know, this is what we want to see. So it could be as minute as whatever, you know? So feel free to get involved and, and say, let's take a look at this and I think, you know, it might take a little longer, but we're in no rush. We have no deadline, so to speak. We should get this final master plan done in plenty of time and have everything in there that we need. Good.
And to borrow Richard Pinsky's favorite term, there is no master plan police out there. All right. May I move on? Believe it or not, a long time ago, back in October the 2nd, we had a copy tenant here at the port and the, the port and the school district committee worked together on placement of adults looking for available, available jobs at the port. You may remember that Fred Barge, who was the director, he and I also discussed the port's student intern program. Both of us agreed to continue the discussion as the new year begins. So next year, early January, we will continue the, the dialogue. You may remember back, oh, sorry, the previous slide, port student intern program, we're going to talk about this as we get closer to the, the new year and into the new summer, but we're going to have a program next summer, so let's start planning for it. Let's not be surprised. We're going to look out for the youth and the community.
I just want to add too, when we did that years ago, we realized that we need to deal with not the high school students because we had a liability thing, remember that? And then we came up with the, with the college students. So, and that was a very good program.
College freshmen, I believe it was.
Freshmen from the port district who applied. And, and that was very successful.
No, we, we've been waiting for that. Thank you.
Right, we'll bring it back.
The next topic, you may remember back, a couple of months back, with the FEC rail blocking, uh, the major intersections in the city. Uh, since we met, uh, here last, uh, two media companies have interviewed me wanting to discuss how we were able to solve this problem. ProPublica Rail Magazine, never heard of them, and of course, Channel 5 WPTV were very interested in the specific steps taken to come up with a solution. I basically told them, we worked together, all three entities, of course, the cities, FEC, Tropical and ourselves, which led to the identification of the problem, hence we came up with the solution. Last point from me, teeter's vessel update. You may recall that we had agreed on a price of 250,000. Then the market price of scrap metal suffered a reduction. The initial buyer actually turned his back on it and called me to refuse it. We were able to restart the negotiations and I'm happy to say that he's agreed to 200,000, which is 50,000 less. But more importantly, that 200,000 is still 50,000 higher than the second bidder. So we met our, our criteria. So happy also to say that Mr. Fomero's, uh, office received a $20,000 wire transfer, so this is as good as gold.
Yeah, so we have a signed purchase and sale agreement and pursuant to that purchase and sale agreement, 10% of the purchase price has in fact been wired and is in my escrow account. So happy to say that, that process is moving forward. And pursuant to your delegation, uh, last month, the executive director is going to sign the purchase and sale agreement today, uh, upon your, you know, acknowledgement of the transaction.
So we bought it for what, 5,000?
5,000.
And we sold it for 200?
200.
Good deal.
Not bad.
And we're getting the 5,000, the clerk is returning the 5,000, so.
Oh, even better.
Really? I didn't know that. Hey, it's a bonus.
It's a good deal.
All right. But here's what happens the next. The buyer has contacted one of our stevedore and companies, we see her, by the way, and the next steps are as follows. They have to secure the shaft, secure the steering, close two deck elevators, secure all watertight hatches and doors, install emergency tow wire, I've never seen this word before, WAser, W H A S E R. Install tow bridges, leave both port and stuffer side Jacob ladders deployed above waterline. Once all of that is complete, and it should take less than a week, then the buyer is working again with one of our stevedore companies, then they will contact US Coast Guard for final inspection and the departure of the countess on his way down to Louisiana's scrapyard.
May I add to that? So, and that will occur by contract on or before November 14th. It's got to be out of there.
Otherwise, we start paying, we start charging 1,800.
1,800 dollars a day.
A day. So they are motivated to get the ship out of here.
Mr. Chairman? Yes.
What is the process by which we're going to dispose of the vehicles? That's coming up next.
I will address that.
And I won?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's fine.
Questions?
Commissioners, those are my points. Is there any questions? I do believe I always, there you go, the AAPA finance in New Orleans coming up, that's in, uh, November. Uh, there's one for the AAPA, Latin A APA, down in Santos, Brazil. And there is a commissioner seminar this year down in Corpus Christi. And of course, last is the Power Summit Expo in Tampa, because normally you can help in that for many, many years. Any questions? Not?
Thank you very much. Good report. That's for the engineer.
Good afternoon, commissioners. You can't get away from the monarchy yet. Uh, I did want to advise you guys that, you know, we had, of course, Hurricane Ian caused a scare for us. We went through this whole suite of whiskey, X-ray Yankee Zulu, we went through and spent 48 hours under Zulu under total lock, total lockdown. During that time, one of the things we had to do was take, uh, take care of everything in the port that could blow around, but the monarch was one of them. So, uh, we did have a great crew. I want to congratulate our crew. It was a pleasure to work with these great guys that you have working for us. Rick Placeras led the crew to secure not only the rest of the port, but to secure the monarch. And I want to thank Rick Placeras, Keith Leggett, Alfawcett, Lawrence Kelly, Jeff Baker, Ross Ellis, David Pierce, Eklund Frederick and Daryl Johnson. I can tell you, I was really proud to work with this crew, to see how everyone worked and everybody worked together, keep climbing up through the monarch to tie lines and things like that. It was a, really good to see how good the crew works. Second, I'm about, of course, I'll quickly update you just to mention that we're into the Port of Destruction Development Grant Program now. Uh, it's reality and it's moving fast. There's some important PIDP items coming up on this agenda and you'll see more in the future. And, uh, we're on the fast track of this project to meet Merid's schedules. The other thing we've been working on lately is the berth one Palm Beach facility improvement permits. I can tell you, being in this business for a really long time, you can tell by my gray hair, this is one of the most challenging permits I have ever worked on. Uh, the Port of Palm Beach continues to assist the port tenant berth one Palm Beach with obtaining the proper permits needed for the berth one docking facility. The steps of this project included the initial definition of the project, a review by Department of, uh, Florida Department of Environmental Protection, that permit which we have in hand. And, um, And so it is in hand today. And then work with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers permit process. And due to fact, this project impacts a U.S. Army Corps of Engineers civil works project, the north extension of the turning basin, things get really complicated. This fact triggered requirement to deauthorize a portion of the north extension turning basin, which is proceeding with the help of Congressman Brian Maststaff. And after his work, his staff's work, to get this process entered into the 2022 Water Resource Development Act as it goes in between both the House and the Senate. Once in place, the Water Resource Development Act, the Section 408 review process comes up. The 408 review process, most difficult piece was working with the National Marine Fisheries. We are now under review with the National Marine Fisheries. As soon as that is approved, we'll have, we'll go into the Section 408 process to complete it. The project should be fully approved and have final permits issued soon. What does soon mean? I think we're probably still maybe as much as 60 days away from that. And that's because right now, once we entered the National Marine Fisheries Service review, we hopped in line. There's 60 permits that one lady is working on. We are number 12 right now. So we have 11 in front of us. They tend to take about three days apiece. So more or less, we're in a 30 to 35 day workday period before we should get those permits. Then it'll go to the Corps of Engineers for final approval. We've been assured by our friends at the Corps of Engineers that they're already working on what's necessary for them to issue the final approval. So we're working hard on it. It's challenging. Things change daily on it, but we're keeping track of it.
Ron?
Yes, sir.
I wanted to thank you for what you're doing, because you know, I've been calling you constantly on this one.
Yes, sir.
Project and, and especially with the fisheries, when you realize that there's so many people trying to get similar projects done, probably not as complex as ours, but if there's only one person doing it. And like I say, we're getting pretty close now. But, you know, when you explained it to me that this isn't something that we can just get a rubber stamp or, you know, call the White House or anything, it doesn't work that way. I mean, anytime you go in the intercoastal, this is a major, major consideration by numerous agencies. And I appreciate all you've done. I know I've been bugging you now for, you know, probably two months, but I appreciate all the work that you've done and the rest of the staff. And I really got educated and now know that anytime you're doing some sort of project like this, it's not going to be a quick turnaround, so.
It's surprising, Hallie. I appreciate the compliments you've given me. I remember that months before we put these permits for review, I flew up to Jacksonville and met with both this and on another project that may happen here. One good thing we did find, working with this young lady Carla, who's stuck with all this work, is there's actually a process that's been used by Port Canaveral, where she tells me that if you have any projects you think may happen in the future, you just may think they may in the next 10 years or more, send those projects to her and she can do the review now, so that you're sitting back with a project undefined, but words like, if you're going to drive piling, you can only drive 16 a day. If you have to do dredging, get the slip, X, Y, Z. So she can present those and have those ready ahead of time. Then when we enter this process, we won't hit this, this roadblock. So we're looking at those things. There's not much in the future that we're, we think this can help us, but we will use it if we need to. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much. Government affairs.
Available for questions, Mr. Chair. And remember to vote under memory.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Commissioner reports.
Captain?
I just want to remind the Commissioners that I represented the port on the Business Development Board, the TPA, so it's probably good to get a replacement for the next month's meetings.
Good.
That's it for me.
Joey, you have any?
No.
The only thing I wanted to say is that we were pretty active and some of our tenants actually went over to the West Coast with supplies. I think Catherine, of course, was involved in that. And I had someone from CEMEX came to my house and picked up a generator and brought it over there.
That's right.
So I just want to thank all the port tenants and port staff who helped out. It was, you know, just a horrible situation on the West Coast and, you know, let's keep our fingers crossed it doesn't happen to us. I think we're looking pretty good for this year, but obviously, in the years to come, you never know what's going to happen, so. Very good. Okay. Old business.
Your turn. Yes, very briefly, you have before you a memorandum updating you on both the state and federal cases concerning Teeters and Monarch. Just quickly, the highlights, as the Executive Director noted, the Monarch purchase and sale agreement has been executed. That vessel will be out of there on or before November 14th pursuant to the agreement. The federal case that we've been working on for almost six months now is pretty much done. That case will be closed. The only other issue now will be the Princess, as you recall, Teeter's own, the Princess, which is at the port of Fort Pierce. We have about $58,000 lien on that. So we are going to, once that ship is arrested, we are going to file our claim in that separate proceeding. And that's about it. That's on the federal front, having to do with Admiral Fleet Law and the vessels. On the state court front, as you know, we have received the judgment for damages exclusive of our attorney's fees, which we are due and will receive pursuant to the various contracts and leases with Teeters. We have about a $1.1 million judgment. We are waiting for the order to come back from the judge. And the next step is execution of that order. That execution will involve sending out discovery requests to identify all of the real and personal property owned by the principals and the companies and start attaching that property. Understand that that's a process that's unfortunately measured in months, not weeks. So we'll continue to keep you apprised of that now. As to Teeters, there are two buckets of things we have to deal with. One are the remaining vehicles. As you recall, we received a judgment in our favor last month from the state court. Effective 13 days ago, we took possession slash title of the vehicles and the equipment on port property. So now, Commissioner Richards on your end, we are now designing the process to remove. We're not focusing right now on the vehicles. I have a draft invitation to bid. I will be here next week to meet with staff, to go over those documents, solicitation documents, and finalize them. And again, to receive input from you. At this point, we're looking at an all or nothing approach. In other words, we're looking for a bidder to acquire all of the vehicles, not some of the vehicles.
Yes, sir.
We should give the, we should give the Executive Director authorization to issue that, the ITB, so that we don't have to wait until November to then have to put it out. Let's give that authority now.
All right. I agree. I have a motion by Commissioner Richards.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Walker. Any other discussion? All in favor, all opposed, carries five to zero.
Great. Thank you. That's a point. So that's invitation to bid on the vehicles. Now, the equipment, it's a little bit of a different animal, and again, with welcome input or feedback. One approach there is to do a public auction. It's going to be hard to, there's so many different kinds of equipment, containers, generators, things of every kind there. So one approach is to, one, just do a no limit public auction, you know, to be held here publicly noticed. Another approach is to do, like the vehicles, a kind of a one bid, all or nothing kind of approach. Welcome your feedback on that.
Probably the same. Yeah, same. You probably need to allow people one day to look at it.
Oh, yeah.
But I'd say the same.
Just like the vehicles, there'll be an inspection period where anyone that's a potential bidder can make an appointment and look at the equipment, the vehicles.
I move that we authorize the Executive Director to issue an invitation to bid on the, on all the other equipment.
Second.
One bidder.
Yes.
Second.
Commissioner, any discussion? All in favor, all opposed, carries five to zero. All right. Very good.
Great. And that's all I have on the case. So if you have any questions.
A great job by our Council.
That's a bit easy.
Thank you.
If I may, just add a little, I meant to do this. Michael Meakin has done a phenomenal job with the ship. If you recall, the ship was listing at five degrees at one point.
I was going to say, points a lot more than that, but yeah.
And he and Keith Leggett went on that ship. They crawled underwater and the whole bit to find out where the things were. Somehow, they managed to do it. I think they put counterbalance on the other side, but no, they finally got it under zero, and that's why we can proceed.
So Michael doesn't have to go on the ship when they.
I hope not.
If you get it, you don't have to go now. You've done all the other stuff.
That was actually a condition in the contract was to resolve the listing issue.
Exactly.
I guess I have one last comment.
Go ahead.
At our next meeting, I do want to start discussing how we're going to move forward on the Mullins property. We have, we have individuals in the room here today that are monitoring this, that are desirous of, you know.
Leasing?
Of leasing that property.
Yep.
Going forward. So let's, let's continue to keep it on the forefront.
I can tell you, just before the meeting, the port engineer and I discussed Mullins, Teeters, the whole of getting those ready to relant.
And just for, so for those in the audience that aren't aware, when we say Mullins, would you point the Mullins out, Manny, please? The Mullins is the property where those cars, that's the area we're looking to utilize for auto shipments to Haiti. So that's the Mullins property. And then you have 3.6 acres central to the port. Probably will be used for other cargoes, just so the audience knows what we're talking about.
I just have a question. Can we do that without the judge making a ruling? Or we do have, or do we have to wait for the judge to come back?
Oh, we evicted them many months ago.
Okay, so we can go on in that part.
We have full control of the property. It's just a matter of clearing the property, you know, finishing our assessment of the property. Certain areas need to be paved or repaved. The condition is very poor. Some of the areas have had some historic flooding issues. So we're trying to kill three or four birds with one stone. Filling some of these areas, creating some extra, a little more storage in some of these areas, and then the paving. So we're actively discussing that.
Good.
And as you can imagine, we're getting, feeling a lot of phone calls, exactly the same. Can we, can we, can we?
Yeah. And we're not going to re-lease it until it's 100% ready to go, right? So it takes a little time.
Correct.
So be it. Okay.
But if I may, this will be under I, too. Commissioners, I've included a recent volume of Margaritaville's passengers. You can see that they're going the right way, obviously. However, it wasn't like that all along, so what it's in front of you is a agenda on to discuss a passenger shortfall. According to the contract, they should have met the second passenger shortfall, actually minimum of 156,000 passengers. Unfortunately, they only had 107. A lot, but still short from the established guidelines. Further review, not only with internally, but also with Kevin Sheehan, it was determined that we were in fact double counting some of the passengers to the point of 20,797. With that, Commissioners, that was number associated with that new passenger that we had double counted was about $145,000. We also took concession of when the vessel started, it was about nine different, nine missing sailings. So I'm just here to ask that instead of charging them 543,000, it is legit that that number gets reduced to 381,000, and that they have requested for them to make two equal payments in the next three months. That is my request.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I have a question. The staff about this, it makes sense. I do move.
I have a question. Commissioner.
Question? Go ahead.
When you say there was a miscount, could you elaborate on that miscount?
Sure. The first billing, the first minimum, is a shortfall of about 33,203 passengers. We went ahead and billed them, but that's within the full year. So that amount needed to be extracted from what we were charging them, and that is the 543,000, $543,000. So in effect, they pointed out that we had in fact double counted. We agree.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any more?
I have a question.
Okay. All in favor, all opposed, carries five to zero.
Thank you.
All right.
So actually, here we go. Now we are starting on the port infrastructure development program. We've been talking about it for a long time. Carl did a great job working with Trans Systems to get us the money. Now your port engineer is going to start spending it. This first item is to approve HDR's work order number two. HDR had been working on work order number one. The primary purpose of work order number one was to take, work with the master plan, take the master plan information and see how it relates to the PID, and take the PID information and make sure it's covered properly in the master plan. And we're pretty close to finishing that work that's under work order number one, which was $130,486.76. This next work order, this is the design build criteria package. And interesting on the design build criteria package is that under the Brooks Act, design build criteria package is limited to 6% of the overall contract value. In this case, including both work order number one and work order number two, if we use the PID costs, not including contingencies and engineering, their work order is 5.5% of the value. However, if we look at the total project cost, including contingency allocations and construction support, with an overall value of $22,952,000, this work order is 4.8% or well under Merad guidelines. So we work, we work the numbers where they need to be. Another important thing is the breakdown of the work order, because we're utilizing a lot of other subconsultants on this, and HDR has done a good job of bringing that into this project. HDR's work on this work order is about $383,865, or 39% of the value of this work order. PSA downstairs is the second largest at $222,598, or about 23% of this project. Moffett and Nichols with their team is in there for about $194,239, or about 22, or 20%. The other main primary subconsultants are Columbia at $10,000, 1%, EDS at $59,000, or 6%. Brown and Phillips, Surveyor's been working for us for a long time, at $27,000, or 3%. Tierra South Florida, a minority geotechnical firm, at $32,000, or 3%. And the miscellaneous other work comes to about $45,000. So you're seeing we've got broad expertise being brought into this program. We're sharing it with our tenants like PSA, and I think this is going to be a great project with this kickoff. So I look forward to approval of this work order, and we'll continue to. So I look forward to approval of this work order, and we'll continue to work very hard on this project.
Second.
Commissioner Richards, second. Commissioner Waldron, any other discussion? All in favor, all opposed, carries five to zero. Thank you, sir. Okay.
Okay, the next item is...
We just did that, didn't we?
No, that was...
I have four now.
Oh, that's right. We did want to give HDR a chance to speak here, so before we close this item out.
He's more than welcome to come up. We already approved it.
He's been working really hard with us. He's been working really hard the last few days right here.
Yep. Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you for having the time today. As I mentioned, we've been working very hard collectively with port staff, stakeholders, rest of the team, basically getting some refinement to the final concept layout for the PIDP program. We're coming to closure on that effort in the next couple of weeks here, which is going to put us in a good position to jump in headfirst on the, on the development of the design criteria package for solicitation next year. So we're excited to get going on that. We appreciate your pull on our next task report, and look forward to working with your staff.
Thank you.
They're going to be busy, and I did remind them that on Christmas Eve, I'll give them a call to make sure everybody's working really hard that night before they go to bed.
Okay.
So we're looking for a motion to approve HDR work order number two for the PIDP design build criteria package in the amount of...
We already did that. We already approved.
Okay, then we'll move on to J1. We've been discussing the port infrastructure development grant design build services. What we need to do next is prepare a design build criteria package, and what I would, which will be done under work order number two. And what I'm asking for is permission to prepare and advertise a request for qualifications based on a design build project. We still have some definitions of how we're going to do that design build. The staff is proposing a two-step RFQ and RFP process, with staff providing technical evaluation ranking, followed by oral presentations to the board, and final ranking and award of contract for the PID design build project. Staff is proposing the following senior staff members to conduct the initial technical ranking of the design build contractor engineer's proposal, and that would be Michael Meekins, Michael Williams, and myself. And that a technical evaluation team will evaluate all responsive proposals and bring the top three, or that number could change slightly depending on how many proposals we get. But approximately the top three teams would then be brought to the board for oral presentations, and you would do the final ranking and selection of the firm that will be our design build contractor.
Very good. Motion, Commissioner Richards? Second. Commissioner, any other discussion? Go ahead.
Yes. Do you have any idea when you think that you would put it out? It would go out in December?
We have a timeframe that we're restricted under, and this is an adjusted timeframe that's on the board. Basically, we need shovel in the dirt by June 1st.
Okay.
And so that, this process is all designed to get us to that point and give you plenty of time to make your selection on the contractors.
So it will come back to us probably in January? You have January 30? Is that it?
Approximately.
Okay, so to come to us to make a decision, January?
Yeah, we'll be bringing it to you early next year to be making a decision and presentations to the commission.
Okay, I see right here in favor. Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor, all opposed, carries five to zero. Port of Beach Board of Commissioners, discuss the process of filling the upcoming vacant seat. Get off, if you have thoughts. Wayne?
Yeah, we need to come up with a process and some time. Clearly, we need to open it up to the public and receive resumes or applications. What do we think, guys?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I like your idea. I think that we should open it up, but receive, have the person, and this is just my input, complete a port application, like they're applying for a job, and then receive a cover letter and a resume. And the reason why, because that will give us, if they complete a port application and along with submitting, if they, my comment, this is just what I think, it would be a good idea if the person would complete the port application, the normal application, and then submit a cover letter why they would like to be a commissioner, and then supply their resume. And the reason why I say that, because if we just, if a person just sent a resume...
That's fine.
You know, but I think that that will...
So you're saying a resume and...
The port application, because that tells a...
Three things?
Yeah, the port application. And the reason why, the job application, because we would know the background of the person. It would know if they...
Catherine?
That's just an idea.
I think you should try to keep it as consistent as possible with regard to how, you know, how a commissioner comes to be. Obviously, there's not going to be a campaign, but I do think there should probably be some sort of process where people express interest in it. I don't think they need, they should be filling out a job application. It seems a little bit onerous.
Yeah, I agree with Catherine.
But a cover letter and a resume should be...
I think so.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, too. Joe?
And I'm in agreeance with Chair Sicklin and Commissioner Waldron, because, oh, Commissioner Richards, because when you look at a person's resume, it encompasses everything, and when we run for office, there's no application, you know, besides filling out the information that is required for the supervisory election, and most of what you see is up on our palm cards or on our websites. So I honestly feel that a resume with the cover sheet should suffice.
Exactly.
And what about the time? I was thinking maybe just not to select anyone, but give them till the next meeting to have it, and that gives them almost a month. Is that something, I think it's plenty of time.
I was thinking that maybe we should give more time, and I would like, in my comment too, I think the staff should, well, I would like to have, find out with the staff how they feel about it. And then I think that we need to make sure that we give the people enough time and maybe put it out on the streets in December, because I've had about 20 people that say they want to put their name in, you know? And I think we should have, like they always talk about transparency, I think we should put it out in the street in December and give them a month to look at it and think about it, because it's going to be a lot of phones.
Good, Wayne?
I want to keep this simple, guys.
Yes.
I mean, simple.
No, no, hold on. I want to keep this simple. We're talking about a cover letter and a resume.
Right.
A month is a lot of time to be able to prepare it and get it in with a deadline of the next port meeting, which is November 17th.
I agree, because...
November 17th, 5:00 PM is the deadline. Gene, it's Tuesday.
It's not like this is a big surprise that I'm leaving.
Everybody, everybody knows.
It should be done sooner rather than later.
And just to piggyback on that concern, I remember there was such an uproar when certain state representative positions became vacant and they wasn't filled, or that date was not set. So I want to make sure that the port is not seeing a negative light in us doing, not doing our fiduciary responsibility. So I think it's incumbent on us to do something, and this has been known for quite some time. When you look at the filing period, when you look at individuals, like myself chose not to run for reelection, and you, you know, had the letter of irrevocable. So when you look at that, this is also, and I think we need to do our fiduciary responsibility and not be seen as the negative light that was expoused on the other races, for the state representative races, and that we want to do our fiduciary responsibility. That's why I think 30 days is definitely enough time for everyone to receive their information and submit their documentation. Thank you.
And would the commission like to get, like if five resumes come in, get copies of them, or do you want to wait? I think that'd be probably best. If resumes come in, you send them over to us. The deadline would be November 17th, and then at next month's meeting, we'll have all the resumes, and we can talk about when we want to actually pick one next.
But I think that... I think you want to vote on it before the end of the...
No, but I, but my question is, okay, we get the resumes and then, okay, we look at it and we narrow it down. But I think that we need to have a time that we have a chance to look at the resumes and then take our time and talk to, it might be people that you don't even know, or you've never seen before, who applies for the position, you know, you don't know.
Well, I think 30, I mean...
And so you're saying we would select the person when, January?
We don't know yet.
Okay, we don't know about selection. We just go from there. We're just taking this to go.
Yeah, we're getting one step at a time.
So let me make the motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm going to, I'm going to move it up a day, so it's before the meeting. I move that we advertise...
Where?
Our newspaper, General Circulation.
Website.
Port website.
Website.
That the port has an open seat, and we will receive a resume and a cover letter, and it shall be to district offices on or before November 16th at 5:00 PM.
Okay.
All right.
So then we get the...
Do you, is there going to be a motion about when you're going to vote on it?
No.
I didn't.
Because I feel like you would want to vote on it.
We'll bring that up next.
We'll bring that up at that time, though.
Let me finish.
That's, that's the motion.
Yeah. And then we can decide when we get all the resumes, if we want to do it, whatever. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second.
I.
Any other discussion?
So, so the motion is that we will have to get the resumes the day before the meeting, and then we're, right, because then we have an idea.
Right.
And then we'll go from there.
Yes.
Okay, that'll be fine.
All in favor, all opposed?
Aye.
Carries five, zero. Okay?
Okay.
Anything else on new business? That's it?
That's it.
Comments from the public, Anita?
I'm going to wait, I'm going to leave after Anita. I won't leave before, but I'll leave right after.
I'm going to go after you. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Director. I'm always here with good news. First, I want to take a little, a little bit of privilege. On behalf of Kevin Sheehan, our president and CEO, and myself, Catherine, we want to thank you for your service, for all the education that you gave me once they assigned me to this wonderful position, and personally, I'm going to miss you. Commissioners, a couple of things. One is, get the champagne out, we had the Coast Guard inspection yesterday and passed with flying colors. Second of all, Mr. CFO, this is going to make you happy. At the end of October, we average 90% of filling the ship, and it looks like we're going to do the same in November and December. So you can add that to your bottom line. That's it. Have a great week.
Okay, thank you very much. Very good. Comments from the commissioners? Joe, you have anything?
I just wanted to, you know, wish Commissioner Waldron well. I remember when you championed, and you championed for a lot of great causes, and that was not only beneficial to the port, but beneficial to our residents and humanitarian that, you know, that you have shown. And I explicitly remember the day you and I both served in feeding individuals during this pandemic, and I wanted to say congratulations, and it's been a pleasure serving with you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, and same here. Appreciate that very much.
Fare you well.
Thanks.
Gene?
Job we're done. See you in Tallahassee.
Yes, and I just like that from the chair and the staff, we certainly enjoyed working with you, and it's not going to be easy to fill your spot, especially of all the public events that you've done, and which two boards are you on?
BDB, Business Development Board and Transportation Planning Agency.
And when do those meet?
Sure, once a month.
I'll go with that. I'll take, maybe next meeting.
All right.
Yeah.
Very good. Next board meeting will be November the 17th.
I get it. I get it. I'm going to take care of it.
At 4:00?
November the 18th.
18, right.
November the 17th.
So it's going to be Wednesday?
It's 18.
November 2021.
Oh, we're looking at...
November 17th of 2022.
Yeah, that was looking at the wrong...
All right, Carl.
Looking at the... Carl, I know it's a good late.
You can't fool me. All right, we're adjourned.